Cool. Well, welcome. This is Willamette Week's city council endorsement interview for District 2. I'm going to have you each start with a one to two-minute introduction. Tell us a little bit about yourself, your work history, whether you've had any civic involvement, whether you've sat on boards, commissions, and then finally, why you're running for office. Let's start with Alana.
Great. Thank you so much. So, Alana Pirtleguinney, I started my career working in advocacy. I worked with labor unions, did a little bit of organizing, some communications work, did some policy work, and worked with other organizations in the area, building coalitions around economic justice issues. Primarily, a lot of my work boiled down to helping working people learn how to advocate for change for their communities. Then I went to the governor's office. I worked very briefly for Governor Kitzhoffer and was in Governor Brown's administration for most of her time in office. I started as a policy advisor. My portfolio included workforce training, workplace policies, labor, a little bit of economic development, a little bit of higher education. At the end of my time there, I was her legislative director, so I got to be a generalist, touch on almost every policy issue we worked on in the office, develop budget proposals, really be the go-between between the executive branch and the legislative body of the state. Boards and commissions. I have served on a number of boards at the state level. I was on the board of City Club for a while, actually helped hire Mike Marshall there. And I was recently on the board for Portland Parks and Recreation. I was the vice chair of the board and the chair of the Budget Advisory Committee. I left when I decided to run for office, just to make sure there wouldn't be any perception of conflict there. And, why I'm running, sorry. So, I am running because I believe in Portland's future. I have two young kids, I have a four-year-old and a nine-year-old. I want Portland to be the place, when they are done with their education, that they want to stay in or move back to. And as a city that I believe will be a growing city over the next five to 10 years, we're either going to grow with direction from council, laying out where we want to head as a community in partnership with conversations with Portlanders, or we're going to grow based on who brings money to the table to develop our city. And I'd like it to be more intentional than that. I'd like it to be a city that grows in a way that works for everybody. But to do that, we need to get this new council right. We need to get this change that voters asked for right. And I want to make sure that we set up this new council in a way that fulfills the promise of Charter Reform. I have the most experience of anybody in this district that is outside of the city, that can bring a new perspective to the city, but also bring the experience to make sure that we set up this mini legislative body correctly. And I'd like to be able to help do that for my city.
Great. Thank you. Michelle?
Yes, hi. Good morning. So, I'm Michelle DePass. I'm a proud public servant. And I'm the vice chair of Portland School Board and the former chair and the first black chair of that board. I've worked for the city of Portland off and on for about 20 years, in parks, housing, and currently work for the Bureau of Plan and Sustainability, where I'm also a union member. I've also worked for an energy efficiency consultancy. And my background is in green building and energy efficiency. I've managed a low-income energy efficiency program all over the country. I volunteer for the Artist Mentorship Program, which is an organization that serves homeless youth through art and music. I was born and raised here in Portland. I went to school, had my first job. I raised my sons as a parent, a single parent, in District 2. And I continue to love the district and the city. And I was conceived and born in the district. Maybe TMI. My parents met the first day my dad was in this country, from Panama, in 1947. And I know Dawson Park is on top of people's minds. It's a hotspot, and that's because crisis upon crisis show up every day at Dawson Park. I'm running because I love this city, my hometown.
Did they meet in Dawson Park?
They met in Dawson Park. The first day, my dad was in the U.S.
Sorry, that was implied. I just didn't say that part.
Okay. My apologies. So, I have the experience to lead at this crucial time. Portland has a lot to love, a lot of opportunity, and also a lot of problems. But it also has potential, and it's this potential that I want to exploit. We have a vision problem. I haven't heard our leaders say, for instance, "I want Portland to be the first city on the West Coast to have solved homelessness." Or, "In five years, we will have shelter beds for everyone." Or, "We've got osprey nesting on the banks of the Willamette River because we've cleaned up the Superfund site." Or, "We have an electric ferry that we can take to work from downtown St. John's to downtown Portland for cheaper than it costs to ride a bus." So, we need leaders who know how the city works. It's not a business. It's a publicly funded government entity, and I have that experience. We have smart, creative, hard-working people here, including everybody here, who love this place, and they deserve public officials that they can trust to pick up their phones, respond to their needs, and who they trust to use their tax dollars wisely.
Great. Thank you. James?
Sorry, I think they want you on the end so the camera...
Yeah, Debbie, if you could sit in that chair, it'd be great.
I am so sorry. I couldn't get in.
Sorry.
Been out there calling people. Everyone will have messages from me.
I silently, sorry.
All right, James, go ahead.
No problem. James Armstrong. Live in the Woodlawn neighborhood. I've been in Oregon since I went to the University of Oregon, coming from Northern California, small town. Studied economics and business and political science. Came up to Portland afterwards to start my career in what I kind of shorthand term as forensic accounting, but it's a consulting firm that does all types of financial analysis, business management-type stuff. Shortly after moving to Portland, I met my wife down at the Thirsty Lion on Second Street, which is no longer there, but I reminisce about that area. Four years later, when she graduated from optometry school, we had an idea, and that was to start our own eye care clinic. So, we set out on that path. 12 years later, we now have three clinics, 30 employees, and I think by all accounts, thriving, growing business.
Are they all in District 2?
They are all in District 2. Our second one is in the St. John's neighborhood, and then I Strong Pediatric is on MLK. You know, being a small business owner in Portland is, I think, truly just an inspiring and exciting venture. You know, I think when we think of Portland, we think of our small business communities and being on Alberta Street, being part of that. You know, we opened with Salt and Straw. We signed the lease at the same time in the same building. We're not in Disneyland yet, but we're working on it. And so, I've leaned into that. I served as the board chair of Alberta Main Street for five years, working to support that specific small business community. And then more recently, I work in the St. John's community with their Safety and Livability Committee, trying to bring county-city resources out to what is a very struggling neighborhood, both residential and in the small business community. I think that really speaks to why I've put myself forward to run for office. I think, you know, we need representatives from the community that understand how the government, how the decisions that the city government affect residents and small businesses. We don't often get that perspective, whether it's what it's like to be broken into at 3:00 a.m. in the morning, to go through the grant process with Prosper Portland, to reach out to the county for behavioral health support. There's not a lot of voice for what that experience is like. And I've shown in my experience working with Alberta Main Street and the St. John's boosters that that's something that I can lean into and that I want to do more of.
Great. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, good morning. So, my professional background, I pretty much started my career working in the U.S. Senate for the Senate Majority Whip, working on serving as the liaison between cities, counties, and businesses and the federal government, right? When Ronald Reagan was president and sort of redefining those relationships in a bad way.
What was his name again?
And then subsequently became involved with the National Democratic Institute when the Berlin Wall came down and was tapped to go overseas. And I spent five years living and working overseas. And I think that's relevant here because I went into places where they were completely reinventing their democracy, or they were creating democracies, and the institutions that surrounded them and the people that were being elected into them. And I saw where it failed and where it succeeded was largely because of the people they elected into were focused on actually making the system work, as opposed to necessarily whatever personal agenda or ideological agenda they had. And I think that's important here because we're reinventing our democracy as well. And then I was involved early on in the marriage quality effort back in 1998. I attended my first meeting on that and built a statewide campaign in California. The first anti-gay ballot measure came to California, and nobody wanted the job of campaign manager, so I took it. And while we lost, we raised $6.5 million. We got every newspaper to say, "We're not ready for gay marriage yet, but this is bad." We built coalitions. And then lastly, as you are well aware of my work around addiction, I got sober in 2008. My husband and I met in a church basement at an AA meeting. And we came to Portland in 2012 as part of our shared recovery. We wanted to build a home together in a city that we really, really admired and liked, and Portland was it, and have never looked back. And it's just been a really... I'm excited that we're reinventing our democracy. But I also think my lived experience and my policy experience relative to the work I've done at Oregon Recovers and in addiction space, that this is the moment for the city council to have, not just me, but other members with that background to help guide us out of this deadlock. I will also point out, I think I'm the only one with endorsements of Jessica Vega Peterson and Sharon Myron and Julia Brim Edwards. Like, in order to solve that problem, we have to be working with the county, and that's a dysfunctional relationship right now. But I've been working with them on these issues for the last five years, so I have that established relationship. I was on the board of the Salvation Army Women's Shelter downtown. And I was on the board, and I'm a senior fellow with the American Leadership Forum of Oregon, as is Michelle. Yeah, I'm running because I love this city so much. And it is great, and it can be so much greater.
Great. Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you. You know, by the way, sitting here, and I've been through these a lot, just forums, it is heartening to hear voters will have good choices in terms of people's skills and experience, no matter who's elected. So, it's been just a privilege to be part of this whole group now, almost over a year. I'm most proud is to say that I'm a union member. I've been a union member for 40 years, a rank-and-file member, a leader, an activist. And for that reason...
What union?
I'm currently a member of the United Auto Workers. I'm a rank-and-file member of Local 2320. I helped start and affiliate the Local 1981, which I'll talk about very briefly in a second, in terms of my skills. It's the reason that I have more support, by far, by far, than anybody in this district from labor. 26 unions to date, including, I believe, one more that's going to come on board in the next week. And I'm very proud of that, and it speaks to both... The support I have among, I think, thousands of Portlanders, people who are members of those unions, and speaks to the reason they chose me over other people in terms of the track record. So, not only did I'm a union member, I ran my local union for 13 years, which meant that I had to do all the budgeting, personnel, strategy, organizing, lobbying, creating legislation, and lobbying at the local and state, federal level. I won a United States Supreme Court case in 2001 on behalf of tens of thousands of creative people, not just in the United States, but globally, which showed my ability to also build coalitions across a whole set of folks.
Sorry, were you a plaintiff or were you a lawyer?
I was actually plaintiff. And I devised the whole... Alas, I knew more about copyright than most lawyers do because they don't study that. But I devised the whole strategy, both in terms of legal, organizing, and fundraising aspect. So, respectfully, I think I have a set of skills that nobody matches in this district in terms of being able to come in here and coalesce both. People throughout the country. I'm working with some experts on developing a public broadband system. And also, in terms of housing, it's something I hope to bring to bear. And most important, I think, goes to the point of why I'm running, there's really nobody... I would say it this way. The tens of thousands of working people who are represented by those unions see me as the voice of workers and the voice of labor. Time when Portland is facing the same challenge that most cities challenge, which is inequality. The inability to pay the rent is a symbol of that. But if we do not address that, all the great ideas we have will not work because until people can afford to pay the rent, until they can afford to pay basic expenses, we can't make a great city. And I believe that, both on the track record, what I've done, and my passion for that, my commitment to that, I'm best suited to represent working people on the council. That's what I hope to do.
Great. Thank you. Debbie?
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Debbie Kitchen, and my background is I've been a small business owner for the last 30 years here in Portland, owning a construction business with my husband. Prior to that, I was a regional economist, mostly for the Northwest Power and Planning Council, doing analysis for economic development, as well as analysis for energy efficiency and renewables. So, my background includes both sustainability, housing, and economic development. And then in my spare time, or as a kind of a passion project, I've been involved in a number of organizations around the area of small business prosperity in terms of economic development and growing our regional economy to make sure that small businesses can prosper and be a part of it. Small businesses are the heart and soul of our city. And we are one of the cities that has the most impact from small businesses. And it creates these great neighborhood business districts where, you know, you can go and find unique, individually-owned business, local businesses that add so much to the culture and, you know, fabric of our community. And what I love about Portland is the neighborhoods that are here. People can be part of their neighborhood, and they have, you know, local businesses to support. They're involved with their schools and then their community. And it makes it on a very human scale that people get engaged in the community. I came to Portland to go to Reed College, but I fell in love with Portland. I grew up in a small town in Kansas. And when I came here in Portland, it just seemed like so much was here that I loved. Again, the neighborhoods, the access to environmental benefits, such as the mountains and the ocean, and, you know, our rivers, our trees. It's really a wonderful community, and I want to be part of making it thrive. I think it's so important that everyone in our community can thrive. So, the things I want to work on are housing. We need to make sure we have sufficient housing so that it is affordable for everyone. We need to make sure that our public safety is engaged so that everyone feels safe in our community. So, I'm supporting Portland Street Response, police accountability, making sure that our police are part of the community and engage with the community, and rebuilding trust between police and community. Safer streets for pedestrians and bicyclists and drivers. And just also, climate resilience is another area that I'm very focused on. I've spent, you know, 16 years on the board of the Energy Trust of Oregon, including four years as chair. When I was working as an economist, it was to promote energy efficiency and renewables. So, I have a long history in that arena. I think there's a lot that we can still do. And includes tree canopy, denser neighborhoods, and many other features. So, that's my platform and what I'm interested in working on and why I'm running for city council.
Great. Thank you. For the next couple of questions, I'm going to ask for responses from each of you. Just heads up, if I interrupt you, I'm really not trying to be rude. We just kind of, we have a lot to cover, so there's a lot to do. So, I'd ask that you keep it to one minute.
Can you guys introduce yourselves?
Sure.
Sophie Peel, reporter.
Aaron Mesh, managing editor.
I'm Joanna. I'm a reporter as well.
Okay, yeah, so keep it brief. And if you don't keep it brief, I may have to interrupt.
Or just go like this to us.
Well, sometimes it doesn't work. Homelessness, I think, is top of mind, as is, you know, public drug use for most Portlanders. The city has a piece in combating that, but most of the money and the power lies with the county. In your role, if you're elected to the city council, how do you plan to influence how the county spends its money if you actually don't have a vote over there? Let's start with Alana.
So, I am supportive of staying within the joint office. I'm supportive of staying within the joint office because I think that is a place where we can have a significant amount of influence. That is not to say that I think it has been working effectively or as efficiently as it should be. There's a lot of work we need to do to make sure that we have common goals and a joint plan for what we're actually going to do together. I know we've started to see that work come out of the city and the county, but I think there's a lot more to do. I am really heartened that we have folks at the highest levels in both the city and county actually meeting together regularly. I've been saying for a couple of months now that the only way we are going to get on the same page is to make sure that we have our highest-level electives meeting together. So, first thing, make sure we're working through that office. Second thing, make sure we continue to have a plan. The third piece, though, I think, is about relationships. And throughout my career, I've been in positions where I have to work with people who have very different values than I do, often have different goals than I do. And you develop relationships with people by finding places where you have a common end goal, even if you have different values and ways you want to get there. And in this case, our common end goal with the city and the county is serving Portlanders and making sure that this is a community that is safe for everybody to live in. And if we can start there and say, "This is something we all want," what are the different ways we can get there? You and I might disagree on which way is best.
Oh, sorry. That happens sometimes. It's motion...
Do you want me to pause or keep going?
No.
We might disagree on which way is best, but if we can all agree that that's where we're trying to get, and every time the conversation breaks down, loop ourselves back there. What are we doing to reach this end goal? I think we can build relationships in a way that we have not seen between the city and county in a while.
And then just a quick follow-up question, and I'll ask this of Debbie, too. Where do you think the joint office is misspending money? Or is there, you know, is there sort of, like, let's say we're doing 60% on rent assistance, 40% on everything else. But where's a place that you want the joint office to spend more money? And where would you take it from?
So, I want to look at like a much more fundamental level than what you laid out, which is as long as we don't know who has already talked to people on the street, we are not going to be able to offer them effective services. So, I think the number-one priority has to be getting that system in place so we can actually keep track of who has been offered what services and what conversations are we having with people so that we can more effectively move people into receiving services.
So, more outreach workers or a better tracking system? Or what does that look like?
Both. Both of those. I think until we have that, it doesn't matter how much money we spend on housing and shelter. We won't get people there.
Great. Thank you. Debbie?
Okay. I also support staying in the joint office. I think that we do have to double down on developing those relationships with the county to make sure that the city and the county are coordinated. We, you know, we put together this office a number of years ago because it would have been so disparate. We need to make sure that we're working together. And I think it's important that both the city and the county buy into that. So, that is something that I think is happening now. And I would also support what Alana mentioned about the tracking system and more outreach workers. I think that how I look at it is every time we are putting together a program, we need to evaluate on the basis of, does this help people in the long term heal, recover, and become as self-sustaining as they can be? So, that should be the metric that we use for evaluating different approaches. And they're going to be different for different groups of people and different needs. But I think that's what we need to focus on.
Is there a place that you think the joint office should be spending more or less money?
You know, I do think that we have seen some successes with housing options or shelter options that do include more private space, as opposed to congregate shelters where sometimes there are problems. So, I think more private space, either the pods or some of the hotels that have been converted, those seem to have better results. And again, that's the metric that I'm using is, what is the result for the individuals who can move into more self-sustaining in long-term housing?
Great. Thank you. Jonathan?
Yeah, so, I've worked in the most difficult situations with government bodies, coalitions, in my role as a union leader. And I do think it comes down to relationships. And I think one of the things that I'm optimistic about is the fact that we're going to be hiring the city manager. And so, one of the problems that you have now in the current setup, and it's very, it's human beings, right? People fight over turf. And the beauty about this new system is that, in theory, city council people are no longer dealing with their turf, like Parks and Rec is mine, you know, this is my area, this is my pool. We're going to be dealing with policy and oversight. And I think, by the way, I've knocked on over 4,200 doors. And when I mention the city manager, which isn't talked about a lot, people love that idea because their sense is that somehow these current people are not running the city better. So, I'm actually pretty optimistic that if we set the tone and behind-the-scenes work to smooth it along, that if we hire the right city manager who can develop those relationships with the county and his or her counterparts, I'm fairly optimistic that we can make a lot of progress on that. And that's where I would put my emphasis as a city council member, trying to smooth that along.
Where's the joint office? Where would you like to see the joint office?
I don't disagree with what both Alana and Debbie said. One of the things, I met with somebody in the county, a high-level person, and she pointed out, part of the lack is wraparound services. And one of the things that I'd like to focus on, again, this is coming from, I guess, my union background, my worker background, is at the end of the road, can we develop and spend more money and develop the actual job opportunities for folks so that when they are leaving these temporary shelters, they actually have a job? And they have something that can actually put money in their pockets so they don't end up in that cycle of homelessness? And it goes, again, I guess, this isn't about the joint service. This is one of the reasons I'm pushing very strongly for hiking the city minimum wage so that people can actually afford the rent.
Hiking...
The city metro minimum wage, which obviously can't be done.
For government employees or at...
Everybody.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, so, first, just in response to your question, just because the, in my mind, just because revenue comes from the state or from the county, doesn't absolve the city council or the city of meeting, trying to figure out that solution, right? That problem. And so, I think because of the way that the current city council members manage bureaus, they only focus on what the bureaus fund. And so, that's been a problem in the sense of, the city has not articulated, for example, relative to substance use disorder, what do we need in order to deflect people into a system of care? And what we know is that we need four sobering centers or five sobering centers, not just one. So, it's easier for a cop to drop someone off at a sobering center than in a jail cell. We need to triple detox capacity. Today, we turned 50% of the people that lined up at Fora and Hooper got turned away. And that's been going on for 10 years. And that totally impacts the city's ability to move people into recovery or move them off the streets into housing, right? And so, the city doesn't pay for that, but the city has a real vested interest in making sure someone makes that happen, right? And then lastly, recovery housing. We need a safe place for people to go. We've had Housing First policies for the better part of the last 20 years. Housing First is important, but sober housing is equally important in the system of care and in the homeless issues that we're trying to grapple with. So, I think we need, as a city, we need, and working with the new deputy city managers and figuring out, just because they're not spending money on substance use disorder, we need to have a plan for substance use disorder that is highly integrated into our vision for the joint office, but does not put all the burden on the joint office to deal with the addiction crisis.
Great. Thank you. James?
I had a little bit of a paradigm shift on this topic that we get asked all the time. As part of advocacy for the St. John's Business Association, we reach out to the county a lot advocating for support out there. I received an email back from County Commissioner Beeson, essentially with the line, "The county isn't primarily in charge of behavioral health support." And that was like, that's not my assumption. And I did some digging, I kind of asked, you know, what is he talking about here? And what he's talking about does make sense, is that, you know, they contract out most of what they're doing. Those dollars flow to organizations that I think we're all familiar with, Central City Concern. And then in District 2, Dugan Multnomah, which does a ton of work. So, I took it upon myself to reach out to Dugan Multnomah. There's a couple of projects that affect the St. John's neighborhood in North Portland. And I developed a relationship with Daniel. And through that relationship, been trying to answer a lot of these questions of how can the city better work with the county? And one of the things we focused on was looking at the Arbor Lodge Shelter that's about to open. We're going to bring over 100 low-barrier individuals directly next to a residential community and the Kenton Business Association. When that location was first a shelter, the riot aid, it was a mess. The restaurant next door was, you know, you guys wrote articles on it. And I asked him, "What's to stop that from happening? As soon as someone leaves this shelter and goes outside this gate, what's to stop this from happening?" He said, "Nothing." There's no, Dugan Multnomah has no authority to tell somebody to do something on the street. So, when I think about the relationship between the county and the city, we always talk about JVP versus Wheeler. And yes, we need to have relationships with people at the higher up. The relationships we need to have is, who's running these shelters? And are essential service providers? Do the police, do street response have a relationship with Dugan Multnomah so that when they pick up the phone and they're having a problem, there is some sort of response? So, that's the kind of relationship building I want to foster. You know, looking at the joint office and my thoughts for how they... You know, looking at the joint office and my thoughts for how they, they work. Daniel and I actually went to San Antonio to tour Haven for Hope. I feel strongly that the joint office needs to have some sort of physical presence in the city, whether that is a larger shelter that can accommodate the scope of people that we have on the street or if it acts as a resource center. When we were in San Antonio, we saw a single mother with two suitcases and two toddlers walk in at the same time we did. And within five minutes, she was being shown to an apartment that was connected to a YMCA daycare. Like, this stuff is not this too complicated that we can't figure it out. And yet, I feel like in Portland, we get a little stuck at the high level when the answers are actually, what are we doing on the ground?
Can I just say something about the Arbor Lodge? They had the grand opening, what, three months ago? And they still don't have one person in there.
Do you, is it technically open?
No, I mean, I toured it just last week with Daniel, and they're still waiting on some final permitting. The fence hasn't been built yet. I mean, I think that's.
That's the problem, right? Like, I think we all agree that there's no, there's a lack of urgency in solving this problem. And the fact that we, for three months, it's a beautiful facility. It's, and even if they don't have all the parts they need to get the permits, like, why is the city council not jumping in and saying, "Let's, let's get this done, people"? What does it take? What makes it happen?
I attended the grand opening, and I can tell you that the county speakers that spoke actually used that opportunity to basically just air out their grievances with the city. I don't think there's, I mean, to think that that is happening in such a, you know, close proximity to the residential neighbors of Arbor Lodge, and there's just no understanding that, you know, conflict aside, this is going to affect a lot of people potentially drastically, let alone the people that are going to that shelter, that need the services that are in there. I mean, we need to protect and make sure that these facilities are successful. Otherwise, you know, the $13 million it costs to get it up and going, the 400 or so people that it's supposed to run through every year. I mean, essentially, I think we need 15 more of those if we're going to tackle.
So it was supposed to open in February 2024, and then they delayed it until May because there was a delivery delay for a door?
The door is impressive. I've seen it.
Great, door's there, not on the next one, okay.
Now, it's a, it is, it is extremely close. I think he told me November.
Great, okay. Michelle?
So I'll just tell a story. I like a lot of what I've heard here today. When I was in City Hall last year, I got a phone call from a constituent that was curious about a camp on North Greeley. And I said, well, let me map it. Let me make sure. I think that that's a city sanctioned camp. But before I go any further, if it's about the camp, that's a different number you need to call. If it's about the people in the camp, that's a different number. So, you know, Ryan and Wheeler, their job is to work with housing. There's another office that deals with, I'm sorry. Commissioner Rubio is housing. Commissioner Ryan and Mayor Wheeler were homelessness. And it got, he said, well, I'm a businessman in the, in the community, and I volunteer at this camp. And I was just wondering if we could have water. And I was like, oh, that's Commissioner Maps. And so the system itself is very, very broken. It is about the relationships, but it's also about the workforce. A lot of the social service agencies that are responsible for doing the work on the ground of the Joint Office of Homeless Services have people that aren't making enough money to live here. And so, and they're not unionized. The HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System, is broken. The measurement and evaluation is broken, I believe you said that, Debbie. We don't know who we're serving. We don't have outstated goals. And so I look at the, what needs to happen is knitting together, stringing together the entire system. Looking at workforce, looking at who we serve, looking at the homeless management information system. You asked about dollars going elsewhere. I think that I'd like to see personally more dollars spent in rental assistance because that stabilizes families. Rent assistance, that's $800 to $1,000 a month. That stabilizes families. The joint office does not cover down payment assistance, but down payment assistance is a city program. It stabilizes families and neighborhoods and helps people build wealth. I'd like to see more housing dollars go there as well.
Where would you want to see that? If you're going to allocate more money to rent assistance, where would you take that from currently?
From rental assistance?
Well, you're saying you want more money for rental assistance?
I'd like to, yes, I'd like to direct more funds to actually preventing homelessness than.
Sure, and where would you take those funds?
That might come from any number of places in the budget. I haven't looked at the budget in over a year, but there's management and overhead that could be looked at. There's also looking at the service providers that we'd need to look at their output and see if they're actually carrying out the contract terms.
Great, okay, thank you. Quick question, this is more of a yes or no. Do you think the county is doing a good enough job of ensuring that their providers are actually getting the outcomes that the county wants? Michelle, we'll start with you.
No, again, measurement and evaluation.
Great.
No.
No?
I'm a no also.
No?
No.
No?
A ringing endorsement here from the county.
Okay, this one, I'm really going to try to keep you guys under a minute. What's the first policy or ordinance or piece of legislation that you would bring if you're elected to the city council? Let's start with Mike.
Wow. I think what I, the first thing I want to do is look at tax and revenue reform and pull together a task force of metro, county, and city elected officials to look at the last 30 years of piecemeal taxation and also where that money is going, whether, and it's not most, it's mostly not the city, right? It's mostly the county and it's metro. And to your previous question about, like, where do we find the money for this? Because where do we steal from Peter to pay Paul in the current? Is there money going to the metro housing tax exempt that could go directly to the city? I think we all hear, everyone's feeling very frustrated that their tax burden has gone up over the years, and they've seen a huge complete reduction in government services. And so I think as a, as a new city council, for us to respond to that, I'm not saying to cut taxes by any stretch of the imagination. What I'm saying is, let's look, are we still, is our tax, that those individual taxes that we voters have passed over the years still aligned with the values that we were holding when we made those decisions?
So the task force wouldn't be about, should we cut taxes in someplace or revoke one? It's how to rely on money?
To look at, are they still reflecting what the public wants? And then I would say, let's bring a ballot measure back to the voters that says, hey, we did this work, this is what we're suggesting. And maybe ideally, it gives tax relief to low-income families in the city.
Thank you, thank you. Really quick follow-up question. People aren't happy that their tax burden has gone up and that services have declined. Who would you blame for that?
I would blame both the city and the county for that.
Okay, thanks. James?
You mentioned robbing Peter to pay Paul. That's a Ponzi scheme reference. I appreciate that. Thank you. I think I would want to dig into the, what has been floated as this so-called Office of Small Business. I think that definitely fits my background. It fits a lot of experience I've had representing the community. My questions, and I had these questions when I sat down with Carmen a couple of weeks ago, what does that mean? And I think the answer is that it isn't quite vetted out yet. You know, is this a replacement of how prospered Portland, how ventured Portland, how the Office of Community and Civic Life, how all these organizations interact with small business? Is it just some sort of a navigation center? I think the answer is, if that is all it is, then I'm not too interested. I do think the city does have an opportunity in this new shifting of government to really take a little bit more of a firmer stance on how we support our small business districts. I'm very interested in further exploring enhanced service districts outside of just the Central City and Lloyd and the Central Industrial East side. That's something that the city tasked Alberta Bay Street with exploring when I was the chair, but did not give us the full weight and authority to really go dig into it. But I think it's an opportunity for us to raise revenue at the local community level and have that revenue stay to be able to, to help businesses. And I think that, yeah, that's the area I'd probably want to dig in first.
So it sounds like, coming out of your meeting with Carmen, you were not convinced that this new office was actually a meaningful step?
Coming out of my meeting with Carmen, I was, I was optimistic that she understood that it needed more work and that this was the first step to what will hopefully be a new way that we approach small businesses.
Great, thank you. Michelle?
Yeah, I have two. And I briefly mentioned the Housing Bureau policy that pays down payment assistance for Portlanders, first-time homebuyers. Currently, that down payment is $100,000. I would, I would advocate for expanding that to $250,000. That's because to build an apartment, we're spending about $500,000 per door. The $250,000 down payment housing assistance would stabilize families long-term and also neighborhoods, and stable neighborhoods create safety. The other thing is I would look at an economic opportunity zone. We have a dearth of black and brown-owned businesses, especially in the central city. We, just speak for black-owned businesses in the neighborhood I live in. There may be one within walking distance in an area that was rich with black-owned businesses pre-gentrification. So I'd look at an economic opportunity zone that matches, matches as one in Denver and Five Corners, where 35% of the leases go to women or minority-owned businesses.
Great, thank you. Alana?
So we've heard four great ideas, and I think we'll hear two more. But I actually want to take a step back because none of these ideas are going anywhere unless we have the right working environment for our council. So the first thing that I want to do is make sure we set up, this is a whole new form of government.
Yeah.
And I think sometimes my colleagues jump over this step where we have to create this form of government. And Portlanders have tasked us with building something new with a lot of expectation on that. I want to make sure that we have the right committees to actually be able to have holistic conversations about some of these big issues you're asking us about, to make sure that we're set up so that we can hold all of the bureaus within the city accountable, make sure that we have space to debate and build a budget. When I asked about staff to support budget work, I was told, oh, no, no, no. The executive office will bring the budget. Council just approves it. I don't think anybody here is ready to just approve it. So how are we setting up the infrastructure to be able to build a budget? And how are we setting our schedule so that we're actually in district at least two days a week? Portlanders ask for more responsiveness and more access to their government. And if we are sitting downtown every day, I don't think Portlanders are going to get that, at least not in Districts One and Two. So I want to, first thing, when I get in there, before I even talk about issues I care about, which there are many, make sure that we're setting up this new council to be successful so that we can dig in on all of these important issues.
Great, thank you. Who did you talk to about staff support for the budget work?
I had asked a member of the GTAC, of the Transition Committee, who asked staff that.
So you didn't talk to any city officials, though, just?
I didn't. I talked to a committee member who talked to the staff. And what they reported back was that they were told we weren't.
That's an administrative thing, not a legislative thing?
Exactly.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you. Debbie?
Well, the first thing, I agree with Alana that a big part of our work is going to be making sure that we have, we meet the goals of the charter reform, which are a more accountable government, responsive government, and, you know, you know, just those, those features that voters voted for. I also want to be in the district at least two or three times, days a week, you know, or half the time. But one of the things I want to work on is making sure that on our, we are already moving the permitting into one bureau, and that is going to continue. It's going to take time to really be effective. But I would like to make sure that we have metrics for measuring how responsive we are in permitting. I understand that it now takes about 200 days to get permits. I would like to see that set in place, metrics that are more along the lines of 60 to 90 days. That will have a huge impact on lowering the costs of, of building housing. And then secondarily, part of it related to that are just digging into where there are some, asking staff to dig into where there are some code conflicts that often lead to long periods of time determining whether, you know, how different codes conflict with each other. I think we need to work on that. And so I would initiate a process to evaluate what are those code conflicts that we can eliminate or resolve so that we are streamlining our code and making it more responsive to the housing market.
Great, thank you.
So I'll answer that precursor, just to follow up on Alana and Debbie. I think that a lot of that setup and discussion in council will have to happen from election date of January 1st. And I've already started that conversation, at least with my outside allies, about what they would like to see. I would love to see you all do a story about how we, how the council's going to function when you only have one staff person allocated, projected per council, where you have to do, what I'm excited about is constituent services. There's simply no way, and I've done government work for 40 years at every level, lobbying legislative, there's no way we can run an effective city council and serve constituents.
Is everyone, is anyone happy with the current level of staffing for future city council members? Raise your hands now.
So I'll just, if I can finish the point, we cannot be effective. And it's almost like vicious circle. We won't be effective. And the people rightly will say, well, where are the results? So, you know, right now, I think there's four or five staff people. So I would love for you to help us raise that to your, to your actual question about ordinance. So one of the reasons I ran, excuse me, one of the reasons I ran was to expand people's thinking about what the city can do and what we should do for the people. And if, aside from the great proposals about housing, there are a few things there that I'm really the only one talking about. So the first ordinance that I would want to put in is having a four-day work week for the same pay for city workers. And this is something that's being done all around the world. We, as usual in the United States, we're way behind on services for people, whether it be healthcare, pensions, or worksite realities. We have been some of the most productive folks in the last 50 years. The minimum wage actually should be $25 an hour at the federal level if productivity equaled wages. So I think some of that productivity, particularly in the era of AI, people working remotely should translate into people's working realities. What are the benefits of that? Think about that. Number one, you're spending more money at home in your community at least one day a week. It's a climate change improvement because you're not commuting one day a week. And I think that the way in which people would feel inspired and do their job, which we can do, let's face it, in 32 hours, there's a lot of wasted time that can be filled. I think people will be truly excited. I've already talked to my union partners about it, asked me in particular, and they're very excited about the idea. So that would be the thing that I propose.
Well, quick, I want to take a quick struggle. Who supports Jonathan's idea of a four-day work week?
A. As the first thing we do?
As the first thing.
Generally. Generally, yeah, raise your hands.
Can I, I would support studying it.
Okay.
Well, let me just say about studying it, there's no, there's no need to study it, with all respect.
Okay, okay.
Let me finish.
Well, no, I don't.
No, actually, no, actually, no.
We got to keep going.
All right, okay, I'm just going to say, there's been study all around the world.
I just want to say, I do think that that's a very worthwhile issue to get to. I don't think that it is a year-one issue with all of the challenges.
100% agree with that.
Okay. James and Jonathan, I am curious, yeah, I'll get to both of you. I'm curious how you guys see the place of labor unions in Portland. You come from very different places. You've been a union leader, it sounds like your entire career. You come from the small business world.
For sure.
And brief, please, 30 seconds, I will cut you off. Don't mean to be rude. Do you think the labor unions currently in, in the city have an outsized influence? Do you think they wield too much power, Jonathan?
No, I think it's, you know, my experience in this, especially running for office, I knew that was going to be a challenge for me. But actually, in speaking to my friends and colleagues, even Alana, and I spent a lot of time talking about labor unions, I think a lot of the same primary basis, mentorship, you know, obviously wages, you know. The Portland labor market has forced me to recognize that wages need to increase because we have a workforce that is in high demand, so.
Jonathan, I assume your answer is no.
I'm not even sure what you're referring to, but the opposite. I think we have to increase union organizing. And one of the things that I proposed is that when there are abusive contractors, in particularly the security and janitorial, that we cut off their funding, that they do not get contracts from the city and get to spend taxpayer money when they're not treating their workers well. So I don't see the, the influence of labor at all being.
What about Portland Police Association?
What about them?
Do you think they have outsized influence? Do you think they get their way too often, or do you think they have the right amount of power?
Well, it depends. So I would divide those into two questions. I very much supported the Police Accounting League Commission. It's one of the reasons, I believe, I was not endorsed by the police units, one of the only unions that did not support me because I told them that I supported.
So you think some unions do have the right amount of power, and then others have too much power?
I, and I would say, though, with the police, with the police folks, that getting their pensions and wages and workplace rights are very much, on my mind, as equal as any public work.
Great, thank you. Alana, you had, in your opening statement, you had said that, you know, you want, you don't want the city to be run or to be sort of controlled by outside money. You really want to be responsive to Portlanders' needs. How do you balance that, Portlanders' needs, with sort of, I think, what a lot of people would say, concede our outside dollars that we need in order to, you know, revitalize downtown? And I mean, Portland has always been a place that has attracted outside money, and that's been part of the reason why we are allowed to prosper. How would you balance those two?
Portland has always been a place that's attracted outside money. And Portland and Oregon more generally have always been places that don't have our, our share, if you will, of large businesses and wealthy investors who can create those investments on our own. of large businesses and wealthy investors who can create those investments on our own. And we do need to make sure that we're careful of that balance. For years, though, Portland was able to say, who do we want to be as a city, right? What is our culture as a city? And whether or not folks agree with what those answers were, and whether or not they lifted all boats, I think we could have done a lot more to lift all boats when we were in a time of prosperity. We were able to set the direction of who we wanted to be as a city, even with outside investment pouring in, because we set a vision that attracted that outside investment. When I ask voters, when I'm on the door, when the last time was that they thought our city leadership laid out a vision that they could believe in, people point back 10, 15 years. They point to when Vera Katz was mayor, often. And without leadership at the city who is saying, this is the direction we are going. We want to be a sustainable, resilient, equitable city. We want to be a city that has good jobs. We want to be a city that continues to invest in our creative economy. Without leaders saying those things and laying out that vision, that investment goes to wherever investors want to put it. If we're laying out a vision and passing policy to back that up, we're creating space for that outside investment, certainly to an end that Portlanders have bought into.
Great, thank you. Quick question for all of you. So the city is approaching a really tight budget cycle. There's going to be no discretionary funding. Where's a place in the city budget that you think too much money is being spent, and where would you send that money to? Or do you think that the city budget, how it is, is just absolutely perfect? Debbie, let's start with you.
Yes, I have a lot of thoughts on this. I do think it's important to understand that over time, as we start, you know, making our management of the city under the new city manager, more coordinated, more rational, more, you know, centralized, that we will find savings in a lot of places. There's currently a lot of duplication across the bureaus. Just having 27 bureaus is a question in itself of--
Can you give me a specific place or a bureau where you believe the city--
I understand that, that the offices often have, or the bureaus often have their own procurement, their own HR, their own, I would look at some of those ancillary services work that happens within bureaus and try to centralize that and save money in those areas.
Thank you, thank you. Jonathan?
So I would say that what I'm looking for first is the question of the council setting a set of priorities. You know, what do we think is the first--
Sure, but I'd ask that you reflect on the current city budget and where you think there is waste and where you would put that money towards.
I would say, again, based, so based on the conversations I've had mostly with city unions, I would look at top management in places where we can eliminate some of those positions--
Great, thank you.
Supervisors, in other words.
Great. Mike?
I like what Debbie said in terms of aggregating some of the back office aspects of each of the bureaus. I'd also want to look at cannabis tax revenue, for example. Most of that revenue currently goes to building up the cannabis industry. And, and that makes no sense, right? Like, let the cannabis industry do their own work. But that revenue should be going into the broader needs of the community.
Great, thank you. James?
Yeah, I hate answering questions without all the information, and specifically with now understanding fully the bonding, basically, holdback requirements we need to maintain, you know, certain ratios. But when I looked at the city budget, I was focusing on our contingency line item and basically our unspent funds that continue to roll over. And I see that as a significant opportunity to either reduce the amount that we're putting towards contingency or move some of those funds into deferred maintenance and start tackling some of the $3.5 billion backlog in deferred maintenance.
Great, thank you. Michelle?
I love what Debbie said about looking, I actually work for the city, so I've worked for the city off and on for 20 years. I see a lot of waste. This would be in the duplication of HR, of equity managers. It's really hard to get a clear work plan when you ask. Communications and consolidating, centralizing some of those functions. I'd also like to do a, just an enterprise-wide look at what, what our work is in front of us, and do we actually have the right people, or do we have 10 people in place doing that same work?
Thank you. Okay, next, we have some rapid-fire questions. One word. You cannot make a sentence out of it. Do you think Portland Police needs fewer cops, more cops, or has the right number now? Debbie?
The right number now, if positions are filled.
One word. More, okay. So fill vacancies.
Fill vacancies.
Okay, Alana?
We have no way to know until we build the right public safety system.
Okay, that's like 15 words.
We have no way to know right now.
So if there was a vote in front of you that was more cops, fewer cops, or same amount of cops, how would you vote right now? Or would you abstain?
Can you clarify if that's budget or number of people?
Number of people. Number of cops.
There are currently 801 bodies on the streets.
So I have said repeatedly that we need to actually restructure our public safety system.
Okay, so you'd abstain from a vote if the vote was in front of--
I would vote, keep it as it is now until we make those reforms.
Okay, okay. Michelle?
Same. One word.
There it is. Yeah, you got it.
Good work. I'll try to do better.
More. Okay. Mike?
More.
See who's the rule follower here?
Undetermined.
Okay. Did the Oregon Legislature do the right thing by recriminalizing fentanyl? Yes, or no?
Wait, did, sorry, did I miss the answer?
Who'd you miss the answer from?
We both said more.
Yeah.
I said, I said it better, but--
Oregon Legislature, recriminalizing fentanyl, right decision, wrong decision?
Wrong.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Yes.
No, not enough money attached.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Are you in support of the Clinton Triangle, which is the city's first mass tiny pod shelter? Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Okay. Do you support the city remaining in the joint office? Yes or no? Let's start with Michelle.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Okay. Based on your knowledge of City Hall, what is the one bureau you think is the most dysfunctional or the most you would want to do an audit of? Mike, let's start with you.
Parks.
Okay.
Parks.
Okay. Michelle?
Planning on sustainability.
Okay.
Not dysfunction, but I want to do an audit next year of the Portland permitting and developments, so that a year in, we can see if we're meeting our goals.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that permitting.
Okay.
I like Michelle's plan of sustainability.
Okay, okay. Which member of the current city council do you think has done the most for the city? James, let's start with you.
Carmen Rubio.
Okay.
Carmen Rubio.
Okay.
Carmen Rubio.
Carmen.
Okay.
Carmen.
That's easy. I just want to say, yesterday, we had another slate of district candidates, and Dan Ryan was in the room, because everyone said Dan Ryan.
That's right.
Do you support what the city did in reallocating PSF funds to fill budget holes in bureaus? Jonathan, let's start with you.
Is that a one-word thing?
Yes.
I can't answer that in one word, because it's more complicated. Yes and no.
All right, that's, that's not a viable answer. If you had to vote on it, how the city council voted on it?
For just this year.
Yes.
For just, just this year, yes.
Okay.
For just this year, yes.
Sure.
Not in future years.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a yes or no as well. It's nuanced.
Yep.
How would you have voted for it? Yes or no?
Probably yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so you would have voted yes.
Because it went to PSF-related projects.
Yes, correct. Yes, Debbie.
Me too. Same.
Okay.
Same.
Would you understand if it was a one-year--
Sure, yeah. Who is the one person at this table?
I dig same as an answer. Same is smart.
Yeah. Who is the one person at this table that you would most like to serve alongside on city council?
You know, I gotta, I'm not gonna answer that.
Okay, don't answer.
Because I would serve with any of these people.
No, I'm not sure. But who do you think is the best person for the city of Portland?
I think everybody here is a qualified person.
It's okay.
Alana?
Okay. James? Not personal.
Alana, too.
I'm not gonna answer that. Choosing your favorite child.
We got a little bromance going here, trying to talk good.
I'm choosing favorite child?
Alana?
Unexpected answer, I think, but I actually think that James's forensic accounting background would be really useful as we try to increase accountability.
Debbie?
I'm more Alana. I like everybody, you know?
It's not a fair question. It's--
Well, it's a fun--
It's a perfectly fair question.
No, it's a fun--
We all gotta vote for number two.
I love all these, all these people would be worth serving with.
I've worked really hard to make sure that there is at least one thing I would be excited to work on.
Sure.
With every single other person running--
I understand you all are very nice people.
It's crazy that you all like each other, but the voters actually have to make a decision.
But they, it should be their decision. I think it should be their decision.
Well, I have to sit down and like, do this for like 40 days, so help me out here.
Okay, do you support the city's camping ban? Yes or no? James, let's start with you.
Current one in its place?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes and no.
How would you have voted on it?
Probably yes.
Okay. Alana? I, one word, how would you have voted on it?
Yeah, she's like--
But this affects my vote, because I would have been at the table negotiating it. And I think it's the right structure, but I would have asked for a more narrow application. As it stands now, no.
Okay.
But I would have tried to narrow it to vote yes.
Okay. Debbie?
I would say no as it stands.
Okay, okay.
No.
Okay. Mike? Or did I start with you?
No. Yes, the answer is yes. You did not start--
Yes.
But again, I really, asking that question in a binary way is just really, it doesn't reflect necessarily--
Sure, that's fair. But how would you have voted on the camping ban as it was presented to city council? That's the question. I realize there's a lot--
I think it's more than yes, no. That's, I sympathize with what you're trying to do, but it's--
Well, I'm asking how would you have voted for the very specific thing that came in front of council?
But the problem with it is if we were on the council, we would, it would have been different.
Sure, yes.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a lot of, there's lots of pressure.
I understand. But we are trying to understand where you guys stand in relation to other--
And we're trying to help bear it through the next 40 days. That's the most important--
Yeah, this does not help.
Sorry. I might not make it another two at this rate.
All right. We have a fun question.
Wasn't the who we like the fun question?
What, no.
I didn't have, I didn't have fun.
What were you, what were you known for in high school?
Uh-huh.
James?
Okay. I went to a very small school. I think 50 kids in my graduating class drew from about a half an hour in every direction, Northern California, on the coast. Varsity athlete and AP student, not a good--
So perfect.
No, but I was gonna say, obviously not a professional athlete, and I didn't pass the AP test, so--
Okay, so--
I, what I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say is I walked in a lot of circles.
Okay.
I knew the most people. They generally liked me.
Okay, so it's middle of the road.
Getting some Max, some Max Fisher vibes.
Who's that?
Yeah. You tell me, you're like recently my age. You don't know Rushmore, the movie? Oh, yeah, that's okay. Don't, don't, you're gonna make me look bad to Portlanders if you're pulling my--
Michelle?
Co-captain with Therese Bottomley of the co-ed soccer team at MLC, coached by--
Wait, at what, MLC?
Metropolitan Learning Center.
Okay.
Coached by Senator Lou Frederick.